Mic check one, mic check one.
Welcome to the Hamilton County Board of Commission meeting. We've got quite a full agenda today. I'm going to ask everyone to introduce themselves that are on the dais.
Chrissy Rochelle Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summer Odumis Commissioner.
Good afternoon, County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeffalito County Administrator.
Charlie Anis Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. We welcome everybody that's here today. We always start our meeting with silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odumis.
Yes.
All right. We have a special proclamation presentation today that I'm proud to bring before the Board of Commissioners today. It's a proclamation celebrating Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated Delta Gamma Lambda Chapter. Whereas Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc. was founded by seven visionary founders on December 4th, 1906 at Cornell University, New York as the first intercollegiate Greek letter fraternity established for African-American men.
And whereas Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc. Delta Gamma Lambda Chapter was chartered on December 20th, 1947 in Cincinnati, Ohio, and has been an inspiration and strong supporter since its inception in the Cincinnati and Hamilton County community. And whereas the Delta Gamma Lambda Chapter's beloved member Theodore M. Berry, Ted Berry, was elected to be the first African-American mayor in the city of Cincinnati in 1972 and served for four years. And where the city of Cincinnati has now named a street and park in recognition of Berry's contributions.
And whereas the Delta Gamma Lambda Lambda Chapter has awarded over $250,000 in scholarships to college-bound African-American young men. In the city of Cincinnati and Hamilton County since its inception. And whereas the Delta Gamma Lambda Chapter has played an instrumental role to the welfare and needs of men, women, and children in the greater Cincinnati and Hamilton County area. Where for over 25 years, Delta Gamma Lambda Chapter's holiday food drive has fed over 800 families. I could clap on that too, but I won't. So in response to the pandemic and hunger crisis in the tri-state area and...
Whereas the Delta Gamma Lambda Chapter has always put the well-being of others before their own. Standing true on the fraternity's mission statement. Developing leaders, promoting brotherhood and academic excellence while providing service and advocacy for our communities for over 75 years in the city of Cincinnati and in Hamilton County. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Commissioners on behalf of its residents and entire community hereby extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation to the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity's Delta Gamma Lambda Chapter for their contributions to Hamilton County for over 75 years and proclaims that on December the 4th, 2023, that it become Delta Gamma Lambda Chapter Day Alpha Phi Alpha in all of Hamilton County. At this time, before you give remarks, we're going to open it up to my colleagues, Vice President Dree.
I just want to thank you for being here. Congratulations. Y'all look pretty good for 75. And I did have an opportunity to speak to some of you. You came from all over the country by way of your colleges and where you, I guess, first, you know, were exposed to the fraternity. But you all settled back here in Cincinnati and we're grateful for that and all the good work you do. I know some of you individually and individually, without exception, you're doing great work, the ones that I know. And so I assume that is true of the whole cadre of individuals here today. So we're honored to recognize you and thank you all for coming in.
Thank you, Commissioner Odumis.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize all of you. You were a force and you continue to be a force to be reckoned with when I was in college. And so you have always been doing great things. It was really nice when we were doing the Pledge of Allegiance to hear that bass sound in here. So I'm saying, we need more men to be more involved in what we do in this county. So thank you so much for all that you do.
I just want to add that for those watching who may not be familiar, this is also the fraternity of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I want to thank you all. I want to thank my staff for inviting. I wanted to invite you guys down. I don't think you've had a chance to be here before, but I wanted to invite you guys down and to be here. And we want to thank you for doing that. And the reason I also wanted to invite you because we are also pushing positive images. Too many negative images. We just had our Office of Youth report where we've helped 26,000 people. But we also know that young black men need to be able to see positive African-American men that they can look up to. And I know that you do a lot of mentoring. Your organization has people that are preachers and... Doc, I see one of my doctors here. I told him my knee now, his knee's not feeling too well. He might have to help me out. But you've got doctors and lawyers and judges. The former judge, Fanon Rucker, who's here. And I know Judge Tyrone Yates was here earlier. But you have all of these different people. I see Mr. Booth and his father that helped start the Progressive Baptist with King. So it just has so many connections and it's still needed today. So thank you for the scholarships, putting young people to school. Thank you for the mentorship. Thank you for the leadership. And so I just really wanted to have you all come here and not just me go present a proclamation to you by myself. So with that, we have Rayshawn Walton, who is the president of Delta Gamma Lambda. And I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. On behalf of Delta Gamma Lambda Chapter, I'm the chapter president here. We would like to thank Ms. Alicia Reese for allowing us to be here today. Also, we'd like to thank the Board of County Commissions here for Hamilton County. You've read off several of the things that we're doing here in Cincinnati and have been doing for the past 75 years, including our scholarships that we give annually around $25,000 a year. We have our Go to High School, Go to College program aimed towards secondary education. Also, our Voteless People is a Hopeless People program aimed towards voting education. We do several programs and events aimed towards helping our youth and helping our community. And we'd like to just thank you for allowing us to be here today. And as we always preach, we're first of all servants of all and we shall transcend all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we took a picture earlier, but you didn't have the proclamation. So if you guys will come back up, we've got the proclamation and we'll take that. It'd be better because I don't think we can fit down here. Much. We have an exciting meeting. If you want to stay, you can. But if you gotta go, we understand. You can leave at this time if you have to leave. And I'd like to also acknowledge we have Merrymont School here and they are covering our meeting. They're for AP class. And we've got Connor, Ethan, and Donnie from Merrymont. Let's give them a round of applause. Awesome. Okay. At this time, we have public comments. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Oh, it's the last one. Okay. We'll get to that one. Okay. We'll just go in order. Lasha Cawthon. Did I say it right? Cawthon. Welcome. You have two minutes.
All right. Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. My name is Lasha Cawthon. All right. So I've prepared something. Imagine giving birth to two healthy babies. Imagine taking them to the doctor to establish a primary care physician in case your holistic lifestyle doesn't suit the well-being of your children. Imagine after being told you're unvaccinated, vegan, grown, breastfed, one week, three days old babies, bright-eyed, hydrated, active, and healthy, that you should admit them to the hospital to be watched. And imagine declining this and then being threatened by Hamilton County Job and Family Services Child Protective Services. Imagine getting a second doctor's opinion to appease Child Protective Services who then again clears those brand-new babies, was told the case was closed, and then to be harassed three days later. Imagine hiring your own lactation consultant to find out the problem that caused your children to lose weight. And you begin gaining them weight. And Child Protective Services still tells you that that is not enough. That they go ahead and they still remove your children without making reasonable efforts, without allowing you to exercise your 14th Amendment right to parent to choose what healthcare providers provide care to your children. Imagine CPS then telling you that they're going to take your older four children as well. That you call 988, the crisis line that is promoted by Hamilton County Job and Family Services. And then you end up being arrested, detained, and taken away from your children. Imagine then being cleared of any mental health illnesses, being told that they have no concern for you to have your children. But it is now, 10 months later, and still not being reunited with your children. Imagine reaching out to the commissioner. Imagine reaching out to city council. Imagine reaching out to Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, to Alexandra Patzfall, to Michael Patton. And imagine that no one is being held accountable. Imagine you doing everything in your power to take care of your children and bring your children home, and your children are not returned. Imagine being a Cincinnati firefighter and being able to take care of your children, but not your own. Imagine going to court for 10 months and then being told by a caseworker that in order for you to have your children returned, you needed to have humility. Imagine no one being there for you or your children and allowing you to continue the separation of your family without anyone being held accountable. Imagine your child then being placed in foster care because Job and Family Services then lost her for 12 hours. And because you were the one who found them, you are now being told that you will not get to see your child or speak to your child for two weeks or until they feel like it is okay for you to speak to them because you lost, they lost your child and you found her. So imagine having six siblings being raised together from 13 years, 11 years, and nine years, and now being separated from your family and your mother. And your mother's clear of any mental health illnesses. Your mother is financially stable, emotionally stable, and you are still not allowed to be returned home. Imagine how you would feel when you come to a meeting and you find that they are giving out $5,000 and $6 million to foster care agencies to foster children who don't need to be fostered. Imagine that this is not only my story and that this is happening in the entire county of Hamilton County and that nothing's being done, that there are no allegations of physical abuse, emotional abuse, or neglect to your children. That is just because they want someone to have humility. And no one is there to have our back or to stop this injustice from continuing to occur in our families. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Malcolm Timmons.
Thanks, Commissioners. What am I even doing up here? So I want to say this to you all. It's kind of an inquiry. So they had this, the grants they were putting out for small business. And I don't, I'm here not to say that someone owes me something. I'm going to have an inquiry. So the long and short of it is this. They had a grant out for small business, which I have, upscale events. And from 2019 to 2021, you had to have lost like 15%. Mine came in at 14%. So I was off by 1%. I'm like, wow, not to get the money. So I was disappointed. Then I got to thinking about it. And by the way, Young Beta Stevenson, thank you, young man. Young man's on point. He walked me through the process to let me know about how this is going. And the reason I'm here, because back during the pandemic, I couldn't do my events at the Sharonville Convention Center. So went through the process, got the money. Hey, felt great. Took care of all my staff and everybody. Everybody was good. So then going forward, the Sharonville Convention Center. So then, going forward, the Sharonville, they went up on me $1,100 for the ballroom that I'm in, then they had me pay an additional $200 for a promoter's contract, which I don't own a business out there, I know. And then they had me pay an additional $176 for a liability insurance, okay? Then they wanted me to hire their police officers, which I have, the gentlemen from the Nation of Islam, who are excellent. No guns, no outside liquor, I mean, they take care of everything. So I almost got to thinking, I said, well, hey, maybe I should apply for some of this money, I mean, everything's going on for me. And then I was told that I didn't get it because of 1%. I was like, well, you know, the numbers are the numbers, and I get that. So I'm thinking, if I'm only off 1%, shit, is there something else for a small business? I mean, I mean, because they are what they are, but my guess, my question is, what does a person do when you're that close and you have, and you came up 1% short? That's my question.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll have someone get that information to you. Dave Schmidt.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Dave Schmidt. I'm the executive director of Mill Creek Alliance, and I know that you all are familiar with our work protecting and restoring the Mill Creek. I'm here today with just a couple of comments in regard to the resolution that's on the agenda today for the Port Authority and their redevelopment plans for property they have out in Evendale. I believe it spills over a little bit into Redding as well. Mill Creek Alliance is certainly in favor of that property being redeveloped, but I would also like to make the Commissioners aware that this is a beautiful piece of property right along the main stem of Mill Creek. It's right in the heart of about a two-mile corridor that we have already restored, has some portions of it that are actually ideals for further restoration along the Mill Creek, and also is an ideal location for the future path of the Triangle Trail, part of linking all the trails along the Mill Creek throughout Butler and Hamilton County, all the way down to the Ohio River. We've had some discussions with the Port about this already in principle. I would just ask that as these development plans go forward in the future, that both the Port and the Commissioners keep in mind the potential to even further the restoration efforts of Mill Creek and make the Mill Creek and the entire corridor and the bike trail into true amenities for everyone in the county. That's all of my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Also, on Ms., Mr. Lasha, 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 on Ms. Lasha, I know we, we're not allowed to get records on children and that kind of thing, but Mr. Luda, if you could, get all the Commissioners what, what they can, what is, what's going on, whatever you can give us, can they get that to us on her situation? Yeah, we can't just leave that out there. I mean, yeah, she just dropped some heavy stuff, we can't just leave it out there. I know we can't get the personal stuff, so that's another prob, um, issue that we're not allowed, privy to. William Jackson III.
Yes, I'm trying to figure out what we're gonna talk about today too, but with everything they're speaking about with our mental health crisis that we're having, we're, if you listen to some of the people that speak other places, they talk about kids that can't stand each other so much today that they're, they're checking, they're checking 30 kids at a time a day, that kids, you know, that we have a major problem today because of parents that are teaching their, their kids things that they, they acted the same way in the classrooms, probably 10 times worse than they, they were as kids. And the people that don't show their faces in the city, and especially the ones that have been permitted, permitted to leave the country, starting under the Trump administration with these diplomat licenses that were tied to social security numbers and driver's licenses, until we get to the bottom of this, like I'm doing in some of these filings and getting some accountability of people that, as they're retiring, or, which they say they are publicly, a lot of these people, but they don't show themselves in public of things that affect everyday people, starting with judges, that used to be judges, that there were some very racist things going on in their courtrooms of retired judges. And this, this case that we have going, people are going by what they have to do with the law, documenting things, starting with notaries, that I'm having a lot of trouble with things that, you know, it's, it's pretty much saying, as you swear yourself in, this is the truth, nothing else but the truth, and there's, there's people breaking the law as notaries and banks that are being documented, like they've done in the past of cases that I'm comparing this to, and I'm, I'm gonna be submitting something here at another department, you know, exhaustive, more administrative remedies, like, we'll see what happens, because, you know, everybody's blaming each other, private, the public, this, that, but they're, they're being reminded to do things here in Hamilton County that they don't think they have to go by to, by higher courts, and nobody's supposed to talk about anything.
Thank you. Oscar Wright, you have to fill out a card when you get done, you get two minutes.
I'm a veteran, I'm of the Korean War. I was a Navy veteran for four years. I was stationed aboard a heavy cruiser, CA-74, for four years, no land duty, all sea duty. And it, I had to fight, and a lot of us, like a lot of us had to do at that time, to get anything. We couldn't get eyeglasses, we couldn't get dental work, anything, and we fought for that. And after four years, I'm thinking that the, that the United States owed me something, you know? So I'm, I'm just glad and admire Councilman President Reese for bringing out information about the Veterans Services that we weren't aware of. Nobody was aware of this private organization that controlled, that had money coming in to, to help the veterans, but did not do so. So I'm here in favor of, of doing something about that if we can do, I appreciate that because it would ease my soul, because I still get feelings about that. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Carrie Davis on Zoom. Can you get, someone get him a card, he can fill it out, that's all. Get the card to him. Carrie Davis.
Hello?
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 Hi, Carrie Davis, you have the floor for two minutes.
Yes, ma'am. I sent each one, I reached out to each of your offices to find out what you were doing and giving you some ideas. And as Ms. Reese said, if we do nothing, then we're part of the problem. And so I would like you guys to talk about what you have done. Some of the suggestions I provided to you all were to contact the State Auditor's Office and ask them to conduct an audit of the Veteran Service Commission, both a financial and a performance audit, because they do have the authority to walk in their doors and determine what they are doing, how they're doing it, if it's legal, and if their budget reflects the need in the county. I asked you to contact the Director of the Ohio Veteran Services because she has the authority to conduct an investigation if you believe that the veterans are not being served in Hamilton County. I've asked you guys to file a complaint on behalf of veterans with the Judge of the Court of Common Pleas assigned to this issue, requesting the removal of the officers. And I tried to follow up yesterday, nobody answers their phone except Ms. Reese's office, who gave me a little bit of time, thank you very much. But I feel like we have all these options of things we can do, and we are doing nothing. We were made aware of this in early November of the problem, and while we all went home and had Thanksgiving with our families, we had veterans who did without, and now we're coming up on Christmas. And because nothing, nobody's making any moves that will be a catalyst to change, I feel like our veterans this Christmas and their families are going to suffer. I applaud Ms. Reese's request for an ombudsman. Lorain County, Ohio, in 2021, took it a step further, and they set it, set up something called the Heroes Fund, and it worked kind of alongside of the Veteran Service Commission and filled the gaps where the Veteran Service Commission was failing. And I think her ombudsman program would be the start of doing something like what they had planned in Lorain County. It would necessarily have to be tied to the judge, and the funding should be for the judge to have an ombudsman who answers to the Commissioners and the Veteran Service Commission, because the judge is the only person in Hamilton County who has the authority to walk in their door and conduct any kind of review. And that was told to me by the Assistant Director of Ohio's Veterans Services, and he referred me to a document called the Ohio Judicial Conference Best Practices for Veteran Services. And if your ombudsman funding is put under the judge, he will be able to assemble a team to do the proper monitoring, and then he will be able to take actions. Ms. Drehouse seems worried about the existing Commissioners, and we all have a soft heart for them. However, I want you to think, when you think of these four of the five Commissioners feeling bad or not appreciated and wanting to keep them on, I'd rather you think of the 400 veterans that did without, who were told they cannot have services, who were treated horrifically. I wanted to mention to you that even though the Commissioners only became aware this past week of that lawsuit, it was filed back in February, your legal counsel is not reporting to you all.
Ms. Davis, I'm sorry, we are out of time on, I let you go a little longer, but we're out of time. Thank you for your input. Thank you. Okay, so those are the public comments, that ends the public comments. I'm open up for Commissioners for public comments and motions. We'll start with Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. Got a couple of things today. One is related to the toy drive for JFS, given the fact that it's the holidays and we have a toy drive every year. I want to thank the Bengals and JFS for organizing a toy drive at the game last Sunday and Jungle Jim, who evidently was quite the promoter for the event, and they collected many, many toys for the kids in need at JFS and for those kinship care families and the foster families. We also have a program that we run every year at the county called Kindness for Kids, and it is a program where, again, we're purchasing Christmas presents for kids that are in custody. And there is a QR code on the website for the county JFS organization, and you can go to that QR code, it's very simple, you, you plug into the QR code, you pick some toys, you put in your payment information, and, and it's delivered. So it's very easy, we also have a tree in the lobby, as we all know, to promote this program. So I just wanted to give that a shout out and hope that people will contribute for the kids that are in our care. Secondly, I, I went to a opening with Boys and Girls Club at the Villages of Roll Hill. Commissioner Dumas, I think you, I, I, gosh, I can't even remember what happened yesterday, but we were both there. Great organization, setting up a recreation facility and more for the Villages of Roll Hill. It's a community with 700 families, and this is a facility where, when you go in and out of the community, you have to pass this facility. And so it's really the perfect spot for it, and I want to congratulate the girls and boy, or Boys and Girls Club for having the vision to create a facility there that'll serve that community. Also, attended the First Suburbs event last night, they had their Christmas party and saw a bunch of mayors and village managers from all over the county in collaboration with one another to try to move projects in the county forward. I was happy to attend that. And then lastly, we've talked a bit about veterans, we've had a couple folks testify related to the veterans, so I wanted to give a brief update. I have had ongoing conversations with SURA about transportation options for veterans, for the, the vehicles that they have for people with disabilities, making them available for veterans for free, making the rides available for free, making the rides on any of their vehicles free. They right now offer a discount for veterans. I am suggesting that the county, through the VSC, pick up the rest of that cost and pay for the, the ride so that veterans can use public transit for free, and make sure that we're responding to what I think we heard at the public hearing, what, which was related to transportation to the VA and to doctors' visits in particular. And then we also heard about the makeup of the board, and I appreciate the comments related to the board. I heard at the hearing that there are veterans that are serving on that board, but they are not necessarily in tune with some of the issues related to the younger vets. And so the younger vets came in and testified to that, and so in order to be sensitive to that, I have offered some ideas to our legislature, I've reached out to our delegation, sent them some information about some bills that are running at the state level already related to the makeup of the VSCs throughout the state of Ohio. There are other ideas floating around, but the idea would be to change state laws so that we could add more individuals to the board to reflect some of the younger viewpoints and some of the younger needs that we heard from some of those folks. And so it, I haven't purposely gotten very specific with the legislature because there are other ideas percolating up, but I've put the information in front of them, and they, to a person, seem to be supportive of the idea, and I think they're willing to help. And lastly, so I've, I've got a letter, so, you know, we're, we're in a difficult position because as we have all sorted out, we have a situation where the VSC has to request money from the Board of County Commissioners in order for us to give them the money that people have testified to is needed to provide for more staff, more services, and more of what other counties are doing related to veterans. And so I'm, I'm sensitive to this idea, but we're in a bit of a bind because the VSC has to request the dollars before we convey the dollars, unless, if they were to go over the 10%, and, and this would be over the 10% of their previous budget. And the challenge there is if they ask for more than their previous budget by way of 10%, the County Commissioners can come in and appoint six members of the VSC. The VSC has five members, so essentially, the County Commissioners would take over the appointment for the majority of those members, and so I, I don't mean to speak for the VSC, but I think that's problematic. And so, but, but the code says that the County Commissioners may appoint six members, not that we shall appoint six members. And so I'm wondering, and I, I met with some veterans yesterday in my office, they reiterated some of what we heard at the hearings, and it occurred to me that if we went, if the Board of County Commissioners went to the VSC and said, look, we need to provide more services, we need to do more marketing, we need to have a more robust response to the needs of veterans in this community, we understand the challenge with the 10%, but we pledge to you, if, say, let's for instance, say they ask for $2 million instead of the $1 million that we currently have in front of us, and we said to them, we will not appoint six members, we will appoint some members though, especially young members, to reflect what we heard during the conversations at the public hearing, we'll appoint two members or three members to your board in addition to the five, and that's what we pledge to, to you in order that you are comfortable asking for additional dollars to serve veterans in this community. It's, to my mind, it kind of gets to what some of the challenges are without having to wait for the legislature to act. I, I feel like, I feel pretty optimistic actually about the legislature, but there's a timing element there, and we have to get a bill passed. And so I've drafted a letter for three, it's got three signature lines on it, I, I wanted to pass it out, I, I just have it now because I just had the meeting yesterday. But it conveys this idea that maybe we could get more young vets on the VSC and more money to the VSC through this commitment that we would make in agreement with them. And, and I have not talked to anybody at the VSC other than one of the board members, and he was supportive of this, but obviously, they would have to be supportive of this as well. So I'll pass it out, just an idea, thinking through some of what we've heard by way of what the needs are and trying to get some action in place. what the needs are and trying to get some action in place sooner than later. So I'll hand that out, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas. No, we came from the audience, I'm sorry, we can't, we not allow. Commissioner Dumas?
Appreciate it. I have a few things. I was on a webinar earlier today, Brownfield remediation program that the state is having, and lots of additional monies are going to be allocated. Of course, there's an application process. Our lead agency is a port authority for Hamilton County, so you would have to apply as a county. I know there was some question, can the city apply on their own, but the question was answered, that no, the county has to apply, and your lead agency would lead that charge. Inspire, Inspire's initiative, I've talked about quite often for young people, in that each group in the neighborhood that applies can get $5,000 for their group and to try to continue to mentor their group. We're in our second round. Once we finish our second round of allocation, we should have impacted 11,000 young people. And we will start our third round, the end of our second round in 2024, and our third round in 2024, which JFS is going to lead that charge. As was said earlier, I was at the ribbon cutting for the Boys and Girls Club of Roehl Hill, groundbreaking ceremony, really exciting. They have a community center, but that new club is just going to be fantastic. I heard a couple people say, when they were speaking, neither one of us of the commissioners spoke because we weren't directly involved, but, and I heard the statement by a couple officials, "This is one of the poorest communities," and I think we need to stop saying that because we may, poor is all relative to me, in that Roehl Hill is one of the richest communities. You look at the history and the community and how much they love their area. I think that's oftentimes said about Lincoln Heights, when people used to come in. Now, we don't allow it to happen, but we need to stop saying, especially as elected officials, and it wasn't Commissioner Dreehouse, that this is the poorest community. We need to look at all aspects of that community because we're planting seeds that we don't need to plant. In addition, I was on a webinar for the White House Department of Intergovernmental Affairs, which I go, every Thursday I have that webinar. So I'd like to talk a little bit about that as I talk about the veterans situation, and I think all of us in our own way have been looking into that issue immediately as we heard about veterans and not getting what they needed. We've all talked about having a history, I have a family of veterans, and so I know all of us are connected directly or indirectly. But what I did immediately, because we don't have any power or authority as commissioners to make decisions for VSC as of now, I'm not interested in a takeover of VSC. But what I am interested in is to try to contact the people who are in charge and to see what they are doing now, what they've done in the past, and strategically, what they plan on doing in the future. So I contacted Judge Dressing. The court has jurisdiction over VSC, and we've been talking, and he connected me with Judge Warren Wagner, who is out of town. And he has, Judge Wagner has agreed to come here and speak to us about the court's position on VSC. And so when he gets back in town, I'm sure Commissioner Reese's office can work with them on the best. We'll be out, we won't be having a lot of meetings, so if we could get him in before our meetings end. And in addition to that, one of my weekly White House briefings, there was the lady's name is Zenita L. Adams. She's Deputy Assistant Secretary for the Office of Veteran Affairs in Washington, DC. And I contacted her and told her about the dilemma that we're in down here and how the veterans are really not getting all that they need and they deserve. She immediately wrote me back, connected me with Deb Ashenherk, who is the, let me get this right, the Director of the Ohio Department of Veteran Affairs, and we're going to talk about what's going on. In addition, during the webinar, the Veterans Affairs representative indicated they're going to have 10 listening sessions throughout the United States. And I asked if maybe our area, Hamilton County, could be one of the ones that you come and listen to our veterans and hear the good things and the not-so-good things, and they are looking at their schedule now to see if they can come and talk directly to the veterans. So my take on all of this is, we all know veterans need more. We all know that the numbers of veterans that are being impacted is extremely low through the VSC. I also know we have no, and I know I'm being repetitive because I choose, I want to do this to make it clear. I know we have no authority, but we need to work with the ones who have the authority presently, which is the court, have them come in and talk and let us know where they are on it. And also, the top Veterans Affairs people in Washington, DC are the ones that I have been working with to see if we can turn this around. This has been going on for many years. And so before we come up with what our solutions are, I think we need to hear from the people that are actually in authority to make some changes and see if, maybe they've come up with the same things, I don't know, but to listen to them, and they're willing to come in and have a listening session with us. And I believe that will end my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You got one more? Go ahead.
The young lady who spoke about her family, and I'm not going to address it directly, but there is an advocate for, just for families at JFS. They hired them specifically because I am a social worker also, and I said, "What about we have advocates for the children, we have advocates for agencies, but what about specifically when families have a specific problem?" So Jeff, I don't have her name, I can't think of her name right now, but there is a, that...
I'll reach out to Mike.
Okay. With the special advocate, okay. And I also wanted to talk, I'm sorry for leaving this out, a little scribble when Malkin Timmons came in, and about being 1% below where people need to be in order to be funded. I think that's called compassion. For me, when we were starting the small business grants, for whatever reason, they said, "If you were a business owner but did not have an employee, you didn't qualify." I was like, "What? I'm a sole proprietor, and I know I have a small business, and a lot of people don't have employees, so they need to qualify." And that's how we ended up with sole proprietors, just someone who does not have an employee. But my, the bottom line of this is, if you're below what the criteria, you have to set a criteria. So maybe they were 1% below, maybe somebody is 2% below. So I would think that we could be adjust, maybe you don't get all the money, maybe you just get 75% of the money. You start with the top, with the criteria, and then if we have money left and you're 1% below, I think we had this with something else we were looking into, some small business. It was a few, a few months ago, was the lady who was just below wherever we were allocating. So I, once again, I say, you have to have rules, you have to have guidelines, but where does the compassion come? You can have someone who had, was impacted by the pandemic and trying to get moving, and they're just a little bit below. And so we need to just try better to try to fit those people where the gaps are, and that's what I wanted to say. That's all I have.
Thank you. I agree with that. I think we have the final vote on the grants, so I do want to look into that, because I was never for that gap anyway. That was self-imposed, it was not a federal guideline. But I know we had a lot of people, so that was a way to have a guideline. So I do want to make sure all of those are presented to us, and then we, as a board, can make our, we make the final decision. I've been a lot of places, but I'm not going to go into that, because we've got a lot on the agenda, we've got some very big issues. I'm going to start with the veterans issue. It is by leave number eight on the calendar. I'm going to give a quick rerun of what has transpired with the veterans situation. Veterans Services Commission issued reports to us that went back five years, five-plus years. I've been here three years, this is my third year. The Veterans Services, from my knowledge, has not ever come before this board to do anything, even though we have a budget process, and other people with restricted funds do come before us. When I got elected, I'm going to speak on, just with my behalf, it doesn't mean that others have not tried, but I speak, each have had a chance to speak, and I'm speaking for me. When I got here in county government, and there's a lot of things in county government that I'm learning and also sharing with the public, so the public understands how county government works, because most people do not. When I got here, I met with Jeff Aludo, he asked about priorities, et cetera. I said, "I want to give more money to the veterans. How do I do that?" His response to me as the administrator is that they will not take the money. I backed off only because I thought they were veterans and they would hopefully be doing the right things by veterans. I was never told that they were independent board. I was never told that we can't make appointments. I was never told that they have to ask for the money. I was never told if they ask for 10% more that we would get appointments. Every time we talk about this subject matter, we're getting more information. It's one of the problems that I have with independent boards that have authority over taxpayer money but never have to report to the people that the taxpayers elect. We do that in a number of ways, and I've been fighting against them since I got here. We put these independent boards, you don't know who they are, you can't find them, they don't have to answer to anybody, they run and have their meetings, they help a few little people, but you, as a taxpayer, can't do anything about them. But you can do something about the elected officials. So I had a problem when this came out. I was asleep, went to sleep one way and woke up with a $31 million headline. They said, "Hamilton County," they didn't say an independent board. They said, "Hamilton County, $31 million returned to the commission and used for different projects." Now, the only person that could answer that question would be our administrator, Jeff Aludo. What happened to the so-called money? He indicated on the video that they didn't get $31 million. They never asked for $31 million, and they give them what they asked for. That's what Jeff Aludo said. Now, if that's not true, then we have to, we'd have to challenge Mr. Aludo. Then, the veterans, of course, would get upset. They started getting up and said, "This has got to stop." Now, for us to say, "I need more time, I got to look into it, I mean, this thing has been going on, they've been around for over a decade." So for me, I'm like, "Hold on, we got to be doing something. We need to take some action." And this doesn't have to be the only action, but we got to take some action. So then I did meet with a board member. As mentioned earlier, I met with a board, I met with a board member too, Frisces in Norwood, and said, "What is going on? This cannot continue to happen." And so that particular board member is more progressive and nice, but also said that their board appointment is up and may not get reappointed. So the one that was working with us might not get reappointed, but was trying to help with this matter. I said, "Now, you said your director who makes $123,000 makes more money than a county commissioner. You said that person was ill and not available." I said, "Well, bring the number two or the chairman of the board." So I asked Mr. Aludo to invite them. It took two invites, but they never came before. In the last five, 10 years, they ain't been up here. Nobody was telling me, "Let's work with them." They wasn't up here. So they came, and we said, "Hey, this is the olive branch, let's work together, let's get to the bottom of this." So they came up, and they presented that the person was not able to come, but we got the chairman of the board, he came walking up. Now, when I looked at this board, I didn't see diversity. It's not just age. I didn't see no diversity. I don't even think I saw a woman on the board, if I'm not mistaken. Anyway, it came up, and then they brought a gentleman, African-American gentleman, said he was Veterans Services Officer, and said they had voted to make him the interim. He stood right here, on video. I even asked him, "Do you have anything to say?" He didn't have much to say. And all these veterans were looking. And then they said, "We're going to do better. We're going to do more." And we got a interim. That was on a Thursday. On that same following Monday, I get a headline. Channel 9 headline came out and said that it's going to, that the old, the old director is taking the reins. Here it is, "Hamilton County Veterans Services Executive Director Takes Back Ranks, Will Now Work From Home." So everything we discussed in this meeting, had the veterans leaving thinking we got some hope, had us thinking we're going to work together. Now, if they do this in your face, sending them a letter ain't going to change nothing. I done met with them at Frisces. I done invited them here. They done come and said they're going to do more. And then their request wasn't 10% more. I couldn't understand, why don't they want more? Why don't they want more? And it's getting down to you don't want the commission to make any appointments. That's what it's down to. But nobody's talking about their reports. We up here talking, they gave us reports. And in those reports, they gave it to us on a Wednesday, hope we wasn't going to read it, but in the reports, I read them. They have pharmacy at $0. Who's going to deal with that today? They had glasses at $0. Who going to deal with that today? We only helping 1,000 veterans one year, 500 another year, 400, we got 42,000 plus families. We're not even helping 10%. That should make everybody not be able to sleep at night. I know I can't. My grandfather, I got to do this. Because my grandfather told me about serving his country, as in the Navy. He told me about the benefits. He told me about what he had to do. He told me about not having nowhere to turn. And then here I am benefiting, and I'm going to sit here and say, "I got to study it a little longer. I can't study it no more." So with that, we said, "Hey, you're right, we don't have the power." And there's a difference between state veterans and federal veterans. I was on the plane coming back for Thanksgiving, and I tell you, God works, I'm on the plane with the former United States Secretary of Veteran Services. You don't get no higher than that. Mr. McDonald encouraged me to keep pushing, but federal, that's a different thing. That's Washington and all that. We talking about the state veteran services. And the reason we got state veteran service, I'm learning so much about this, I learned from Teresa Burns, disabled veteran that was here last time. She told me, "When you come out, you got, you got to fill out paperwork to get to the VA level. You got to get to a certain percentage." So they got the state veterans supposed to help be that bridge. So when you come out, you got, you can pay for your rent, you can pay for your food while you're getting that paperwork in place for the federal benefits. So we can't really call the federal on this because they're going to say they on Vine Street, that's the VA, and their service is placed on Vine Street. We're dealing with the state people. The state put it in place for it to be a pass-through from the county. And then when I looked at their documents, nobody wants to talk about, we said, "Hold up," but they didn't hold up on a 4% raise for themselves. They didn't hold up on a 4% raise for themselves. But nothing percentage-wise in the budget that I got to vote on, all of us would be voting on, a budget that ain't going to help no more veterans. We're just as guilty. If I go along with that, I'm guilty because I wasn't guilty before because I didn't know about. And now we know about. And I'm going to pass a budget that I know only going to help 1,000 veterans, $0 for glasses, $0 for pharmacy, only $2,000 to help you with your gas and electric. And then I say, "Well, I sent them a letter and I want to work with them. I hope they work with..." I brought them here, and they said they didn't want to work with us. So my thought is, my resolution... So my thought is, my resolution, before I go to resolution, we also talked about marketing. I want you to pull up, I'll tell you, this stuff must be haunting me. I was asleep and woke up, and this got on, this came on the TV.
Veteran who needs help obtaining VA benefits, transportation to medical appointments, or emergency financial assistance. Warren County Veteran Services is here to serve you. Look out for our new outreach vehicle traveling throughout Warren County. And learn more about how Warren County Veteran Services Office can help veterans and their families, while also providing a direct link to local, state, and federal veterans benefits. We're veterans helping veterans. To learn more, call Warren County Veteran Services Office at 513-695-2717.
Now, we asked about marketing, they said, "We got a website." We asked about transportation, they said they got some bus cards. Even if we cut a deal with Sorta, if we had a disabled vet up here with one leg, you get them on the bus, and they got to transfer and go, "Why can't we get nothing like this? Warren County's smaller than us, and they got a, look at that, that, that big old bus coming through here." And helping people, and advertising. And we're saying, "We got to learn more." They also are advertising at Paycor Stadium, that we got to come up with the money to pay for. Paycor Stadium, our taxpayers. And they got advertising they done put up. We have no advertising. And then, if we go with this budget, you can't do no more, because this is a small budget. So instead of just begging, I think we need a liaison that can be full-time, that's under this board and reports to the administrator. Now, we create these positions all the time. We've got different offices, and we run and hire people to be the person over those offices. I can't think of a more important office than to have a Veteran Services Support Office. And not just have, you know, "Some, someone, someone served in the military, have them run over there when they got time." No, I'm talking about an ombudsman. And an ombudsman could come back with other recommendations. It's not saying it's the only thing we're doing, but we would have an ombudsman, and their job would be, um, their job would be to be the liaison between Veteran Services, also liaison between the Federal Veterans Affairs, would also put our money toward marketing. We wouldn't give it over there and say, "Are y'all gonna market?" Because they not gonna market. They ain't, don't take the money. You see it now. They not marketing. They saw it on TV like I saw it on TV. They not gonna do it. But then, we would have this ombudsman to do marketing, to get the word out, so people know what's supposed to be going on. And then have a report. "I sent somebody over there to you. What has happened with that person? Have they been helped?" Be able to report to us and say, "This many people we've been helping, this many things we've been doing." Be able to go to events and represent Hamilton County. And then to have a Hamilton County event. A big event that we would have at Paycor Stadium that we own. And they have community days in our contract that we're supposed to do. Now, what would that look like? We bring DAV over here, disabled veterans. They're over in Kentucky. They would be there, taking applications. You would have the veteran federal people taking applications. We'd have the state people taking applications. We would have the families there to come and enjoy and be together, face paintings, et cetera, music. It would be Hamilton County's Veterans Awareness and Support Day. And be big down here on the Ohio River to help connect veterans. So with that, because of everything, the state takes a long time, and they're getting ready to go on recess. Being getting them passed by now, it ain't going. It didn't get in the, it didn't, we didn't make the budget. If you don't make the budget, Doc, it hardly ever happens. We're getting ready to do a capital budget, but this wouldn't be capital, so it wouldn't be going. More veterans with nothing to do. We've got a budget we gonna pass, and I need to have something before I go with this budget, knowing that it's not gonna help any more veterans. And so, today, I'm introducing this resolution, not on my behalf, but on behalf of the veterans that don't, are not getting serviced. This is just a beginning step. Doesn't mean we can't add, doesn't mean we can't do more, but we got to take a step. And so, the resolution says, it talks about all of the history, what happened with the veterans. And it brings accountability to us, where we have somebody here that can keep us abreast of what's going on. As indicated legally, we cannot allocate additional funding unless they ask for it, because they not gonna accept it, because if it's 10%, and I don't know if it's just about two people or three people or what have you. I didn't see no diversity sitting in here. And then, when they, I just don't know, how can you trust somebody that comes in and say, "Here's the interim person, and we gonna work on all this." And that's on a Thursday, they didn't even give it a month, on a Thursday, and then it read that Monday morning, they told the guy, "Thank you. You did your job. Now go on, get demoted again. We going back to business as usual." And then I read the budget, and they said, "Hey, we gonna ask for what we asked for last year." So how do you, how do you support that? So with that, this resolution says, "Now therefore be resolved that in efforts to assist the veteran population of Hamilton County, that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners support the establishment and allocation of funding of an Office of Veteran Affairs under the Board of Commissioners and County Administrator, with an ombudsman to serve as a liaison between the citizens, the board, and Veteran Services Commission, to better assist with the delivery and marketing of resources and opportunities. Be it further resolved that the county establish and allocate funding for the first-ever annual Veterans Appreciation Resource Day at our very own Paycor Stadium, with an onsite application process and access to grants, housing, workforce, healthcare, disability, food assistance, those would be the partners that would be there. This day should be marketed and promoted with paid advertising, text messaging, and transportation services. According to our stadium contract, we have community days under the stadium lease. This event should be done before the bingle season." Somebody say, "You gonna do it, it's gonna be cold." No, we doing it, we got that stadium 365 days. We want to do it before, while the stadium is sitting empty. The other thing that we said, "Be it further resolved that the additional funding be allocated to Veterans Commission, possibly, to procure a van for transportation of veterans, provide additional services to veterans, and expand the outreach efforts." So this is a start. Now, are we saying that, uh, somebody say, "Well, can we do that legally? We gonna take over?" But we not taking over Veteran Services. They gonna stay, they keep doing the bare minimum they been doing. We got the ombudsman to send people over there to know what they're supposed to be doing, and that person will be looking and checking. Mr. Johnson came, and I sent him on this day. What have y'all done for Mr. Johnson? And be able to report back to us. That's, I think, is a good first, this is a good first step. How are we gonna get the money? Well, we're supposed to be allocating them, we got, they got up to almost $10 million they can ask for. So some of that money we using should have been going to veterans. So we should have some money. And so, I tried to answer these questions. I put it out early as a, as a motion, so that my colleagues could look at it, they could see it, they could massage it. It's not, I'm not springing it on anybody. I've had the hearings, we had the people here, tried to work with them, see if they gonna do something different. You know, they didn't. I've met with board members, tried to see if we can talk, a board member, they didn't even really listen to that board member. We have no choice. We have no choice. And let me just say that I would hope that this can be passed today. And I want to be on record. I want to be on record. This is where I stand. I want to be on record. Because we have big projects, they come in and tell us, "We got to turn it around in 30 days, and we get to run it." World Cup King told us, "Got 48 hours. You got to sign on the dotted line." And we went to stopping what we were doing to make sure it happens. Why can't we do it when it comes to the people, the veterans? And I know all of us care about veterans. That's, I don't think that's a question. There's a lot of people in the community that care about veterans. But we need some action, and we're not getting it across the street. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve by leave number eight. Is there a second? I'd like to introduce by leave number eight and have it on the record to the clerk. It's on the record. And I think it's a sad day. A sad day for veterans. We can stand up for the big business, but we can't do nothing for the veteran. It's a sad day.
Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on some of what was said. So we, I think all three of us are working on this issue, and I applaud that. If we were to bring in Judge Wagner, which I think is a great idea, I think the VSC should come in with him and listen to and respond to some of the concerns that we've had. Some of the board members, I don't know who we've all talked to individually, some of the board members do want to work with us. And the whole idea of appointing additional board members would be that we would have board members that are anxious to do something different and to act. We, we have them, the ORC establishes the VSC, there's nothing we can do about that. They are the agency that has been established by the Ohio Revised Code. I think we just have a different perspective on whether or not we can get them to do what they said they would do at that meeting. They did say they would do more marketing. They did understand that people were not being served in the way they should be served. And so, I just have a different perspective related to the VSC and the idea that we can add some members and have some influence in that way, and give them the resources they need to respond to the needs in the community. And even, and with the letter, I didn't add any kind of contingency, and maybe there should be a contingency in there. And I welcome everybody's ideas, by the way, related to the letter. I didn't sign it, because I, I hope it's not the final, because I want everybody to weigh in. But maybe there should be a contingency about what our, our expectation is by way of how they would spend additional dollars if, if they were to ask for those, and we were to appoint a couple of new members. So I just wanted to offer that. And also, in my, you've mentioned the buses, and I just wanted to highlight, in my conversations with Sorta, Sorta is willing to wrap buses and advertise for the VSC to make sure that veterans know that that service is available to them for free. And I don't know how many buses, and I, my impression was that they would absorb the cost. And so, I did want to thank them for that idea. As I said, it's a, it's a work in progress, but I'm anxious to, as you say, get something done here as soon as possible. And I'm hopeful that if, if Judge Wagner is available to come in, the VSC can come in, some of the board members can come in again. This, I think this, we, we need to keep digging down on this and hopefully get something accomplished before we break for the holiday. And there, because there are budget items in here too, and I know our staffs, and I did meet with your staff commissioner recently, offered some ideas, none of which have been discussed here by way of the motion. I, I, look, I, I'm, I would like to work with the VSC, I would like to work with Judge Wagner, I would like to work with my colleagues to try to come to a resolution on what more we can do for veterans, and I'm hoping that we get there before the Christmas break.
Well, let me just say that I passed out the motion directly before you came with this letter a couple of times. It was sitting for a couple of weeks. I indicated when I was going to do it. I think the issue, though, is not about, you said, "Let's invite VSC." I just got here. VSC should have been invited. You were here way before me, they never came, and they, they've been doing this for years. This ain't just happened these last two years. VSC came. So I don't want to give, we, I think we should invite VSC. VSC was here.
I requested that they come.
VSC was here. No, I requested it by email.
The both of us requested that they come in.
I agree they should come in and respond to the concern. Well, they came in. And they didn't respond. And they had a guy here that was embarrassing. If you go back and look at the tape, they had a guy here that was embarrassing. Said this guy gonna be the interim, and by Monday, the guy was not the interim. And so, my whole point is, it's not someone, it got nothing to do with me. I'm not getting veteran benefits. What it got to do with is, I don't want to play games with veterans. The bottom line is, these people say, "I want to have them come in." We just had them come in. They ain't been in ever before, and they've been in existence for years. They came in, they presented, they said they were gonna do something, and then the budget came back, they asked for the same amount. Very, not 10% over. And then I found out only because appointment, it's not about just who gonna, we got some appointments. I want to know how we gonna help these veterans, whoever is on the board. I mean, what are we doing to put our foot down to say, "In the next 45 days, you gonna help veterans?" That's where I'm coming from, and I put this around. The idea is that, I asked anybody if they had any ideas that they wanted to add yours, well, send a letter.
No, 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 no. I talked to your staff.
That's what I got back with. That's why I don't like the chief of staff thing, because we get into a he's saying, she's saying thing. And I like to hear it for myself, but whatever you got to tell me, let's say it out here, because you ain't got to tell me.
I have, I have offered my ideas, and I added them.
Okay, what is the idea, is that you want to have, I would be working to amend.
I've already talked about it, the legislature piece, the sort of.
The state legislature? Why would that be in my resolution? Or county?
Because the resolution is how we're gonna respond to the needs of the veterans in this community. That's, that's what I, I mean.
Okay, so you wanted amendment to say that we're sending legislation, saying we're willing to accept.
I want to have something from all three of us that incorporates ideas, that is a collective move forward for veterans.
That's what I was looking for too, and I let it be, I put it out, I got to get the date of the, what date was the, the motion? We put a motion out, and it's been weeks. November 9th? November the 9th?
I reached out to your state.
November the 9th. And if you wanted amendment to say we would talk to the state, but I didn't want to get rid of doing something and say, "I'm just gonna send something to the state." I've been at the state, you've been at the state, and you know Democrats ain't in charge at the state, and they can't hardly get, we hardly can get anything done at the state. We very seldom can get anything done. I don't mind writing a letter in addition to this.
That's what I'm saying, it should be a collective group of ideas.
Well, I tried to be collective. It can't be collective just when you show up. I tried to be collective, I gave it to everybody and said, "Hey, here's something." I gave it as a motion, I put it out in public, been transparent with it. I didn't just write this up yesterday and come with this, and I don't want that appearance. I said, "If you want to add something, but if you're gonna take away that I don't want an ombudsman, then no, I wasn't going to support that particular, because I want to have an actionable item that actually does something right now for veterans, not some, not me pushing it up to another group and say, "Oh, it's them, or it's that person, or it's this person." So that's why I was bringing that forward. But if I didn't want forward, I wouldn't have put it out all early. I would have waited, kept it to myself, and then dropped it today. I dropped it on November the 9th. So I do want to clear that up. I think that's very important. And let me say, I wouldn't have wanted to deal with this. I just got here. I would hope this thing would have been solved before I showed up. I just getting here. We could have been, got to the state, we could have, these people been doing it every year after year after year, according to the WCPO report. They've been doing it every year. So that's where, we can't just say, "Oh, because it's somebody's idea, we don't like it," or whatever. It's, it's just, I was just trying to, I brought them here. We brought them here. Go get the tape.
Yep, go get the tape.
Go get the tape. They were here, and all of us got to ask questions. They told us they was gonna do something. Then we get the headline. I didn't write the headline, they wrote that, this is from the news. I didn't know they had got rid of them. They demoted the guy on Monday. Introduced them to us on Thursday, demoted them on Monday. And then the budget, I didn't write the budget, Aludo wrote this budget. This budget had the same amount of money from last year. So that's why I got issues. We got to do something different.
This was just brought to our attention by the veterans, and I think we're all trying to respond. We've all been here for more than a couple of years, and none of us were aware of what was going on until the veterans came and said something. So here we are, trying to respond. So I, I just, you know, I just want to say that, again, hopeful that we can all get something done here before the end of the year, because we need some movement, as we all agree, we need some movement on this issue.
Well, I put something forward for action. So I put something forward for action. Commissioner Dumas.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think there, there's no doubt that we all care about veterans, that veterans are our top priority. I think it's a difference in strategy for me. I'm only speaking for me. And as I said earlier, I don't believe in a takeover. In other words, they admitted that they have not been doing things wrong, right, the VSC. They admitted that they need to do marketing and then advertising. They admitted that they need to do marketing and advertising, we have a by leave here, a by leave 10, the Veterans Relief, $104,000 additional dollars. But for me, the strategy is to talk to the people who have the power and authority to actually do something. As we work through it, the judges are the ones who have the authority. Now, it may eventually change, I don't know. So for me, I want to talk to the judges, as was mentioned earlier, have them come over, they may have the same strategy. They may say a van, an ombudsman, but I don't think, for me, I need to hear from them, and they will be coming in. In addition, I want to hear from more veterans. We heard from some of them that came, some of them that have called me and emailed me. I think there needs to be a mass needs assessment of veterans in general and what they want. I think that's really important. As it relates to the paperwork that came in from five years ago, immediately, as I heard about the issues, I immediately asked for all the data that they have, and that's how we got all those five reports when they were here. I asked for that paperwork, and it painted a terrible picture that something needs to be done. But I'm just one who believes in collaboration and partnership, and to, as I said, to hear from the judges, to hear from the Veterans Affairs Department that I've been talking to, and then move from there. And so for me, it's just a difference in strategy. I think it's great that we have the passion that we all have for veterans, and I'm just looking at doing it in a different way. And I don't want anybody to paint the picture that we don't care because something was put before us, or I don't care because something was put before me and I did not vote on it in an affirmative. But I am waiting for the judge to come in, he's out this week, as I was saying, should be in in the next week, and see what their strategy is, they also saw that negative publicity. And as was mentioned earlier, we didn't know about this problem until it got brought forth to us, and immediately, all three of us start working on it in our own separate ways. And so I think until we hear from the owners of this commission, we do not need to move forward and try to take over with our own ideas, that's all I have.
Thank you, I'm glad you brought up the budget adjustment, because on Tuesday, we were talking about the budget, and everybody got a chance to ask their questions or what have you. Then it got to me, and I got my chance to ask the questions, and I had asked about veterans having the same amount that they had already asked for before. And then all of a sudden, I get an email that afternoon, right after we got done meeting. An email saying now we gonna do a budget adjustment. And my question to Mr. Aludo, because I want to make sure we get down to the bottom of this stuff, because I'm hearing stuff every different day, and he want to come at me, but we need to be getting down to the bottom of it, of the people who's doing this to the veterans, instead of coming at Alicia Reese, we should be just as angry and upset of the people who have not been servicing the veterans, that's where the energy should be, that's where my energy is. But Mr. Aludo, you have on here an adjustment, and my question is, you told me that they had to ask for the money, and we give them the money they asked for, so why are you making an adjustment of $100,000? Did they ask for that extra $100,000 and you did not give it to them? And if so, why?
Yeah, so Commissioners, the, this is, just for anyone who's followed along, I think this is by leave, a portion of by leave 10. As we get later in the year, we've got more budget adjustment items that come forward before us. This one relates to a request of the Veteran Services Commission related to, I think it's $104,030. This relates to the budget for this year, 2023. So every year, as we've discussed, the board, this board passes a resolution saying, here's what Veteran Services requested, here's the amount that was allocated to Veteran Services, because we know that every year, Veteran Services Commission historically and traditionally does not spend what this board allocates. And I think historically, as far as I go back, past five years or more, may have never spent what this board has allocated, but this board has routinely passed a resolution that says, here's what you've requested, here's what we're allocating in the budget based upon your historical spend, but.
Is it the same, though, I gotta get to the bottom line. Did they request an amount, and did you give them the exact amount they requested, or did you recommend less?
No, and Commissioner, and so in the resolution that the board passed last year.
But no, I'm saying last year, is it the same amount, I know the resolution said, if you need more, come back.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't just say that, Commissioner, it says, it says the veteran, this was unanimously approved, Veteran Services requested a budget of 1.21 million. Hamilton County Administration recommended a budget of 1.1 million based upon the department's prior year expenses, which, just as an aside, was $995,000 that prior year, but that that amount, that delta would be available if needed in the future for them to come back. They have never come back for that, this year they have, and they came back and said, we would like that additional $104,000.
Well, this is the thing I got a question about, because we going, we gotta trust you, you got all the numbers, you're the one that gets to talk to each commissioner, I ain't talking about no chief of staffs. Chief of staffs, nice people, but nobody elected the chief of staffs. And we've had times when chiefs of staffs got together, and the elected official got up here and did something different, said, I don't want to do it, I changed my mind. So you get to speak to each of us, and a lot of people don't know this, county government, we cannot talk to each other until we come to this meeting. We can't have one-on-one, so whatever I want to come up with, I can't even present it, I got to have somebody else present it. My question is, if I came to you and said, I want to give more money to veterans, then why would we have something that's less than what the veterans had asked for? That's what I'm, if all of, you said all three of us had asked you to do more, or maybe I don't need to ask that question. Here's where I'm at, whatever they asked for, I want that amount, so I don't have to get bamboozled, or, you know, I didn't know, and then you coming up here telling me the three of y'all, you recommended it. So that's where I'm getting frustrated, and the thing is, is that like, we get frustrated, they, people getting, y'all getting frustrated with me, but ain't nobody getting to the administrator, who's, who, basically, you told me that they requested, and we gave them what they requested. So I would like for this budget to make sure this is what they requested. Because that lady had her hand up, Pam, and she was trying to dispute it, and you had told me, no, we gave them what they asked for. So whatever they asked for is the number I want to see, down to the nickel. I don't want to say, well, we gave them 49 cents less, but give it down to the nickel. Because I said, I wanted to give more, so if I want to give more, why would I want to have a budget that has anything in it that's less? So I would like to know, in this budget, that we're getting ready to vote on, I want to have exactly what they requested. And then if the board decides we don't want it, or we do, then we can go from there. But, you know, I was telling, you told me, and I was telling them, that we gave exactly what they had requested. I don't care what they spent in the past, what did they request? Because we were all trying to give more, according to you, I know I was.
Well, so Commissioner, I would just say that when this, when this, I think it was the very first meeting this came up, and I think you had asked me to do kind of a primer for the entire board on this. It's exactly what I said, was that they submit a budget request, and we adjust that for historical spend. Said that very directly, that that budget, as it is recommended to the board, is adjusted for historical trend and spend. So that is not exactly what they requested, at the same time, they have never spent what we have authorized them to spend.
But isn't it odd that on Tuesday, you did your Budget Town Hall? And I went in here and said, wait a minute, you asked for the same amount of last year? And I made a big, you can go back to the video. And then soon as we get to the office, now we got an email saying you want to make a budget adjustment of $104,000.
That's not, that's not for the 24 budget, that is for the 23 budget, that is for this year's budget, not for next year's budget.
It still seemed odd, for me to make it clear, so I got an understanding, because when you come in, you got this, 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 you running, you got all the numbers, you got all the money, you got all the staff, and I want to, if I say that I want the maximum for veterans, I'm expecting to see the maximum for veterans.
And if the board would like.
So that I can understand it, and I don't have to get two votes to see it, I need to see it.
If the board would like for the budget, the 24 budget, to be adjusted to have the budget for Veteran Services Commission reflect their request, we can certainly do that. I will be very upfront in saying we have historically not done that, because as I said, they have not spent what we've allocated in the past, and for us to then say, okay, we're going to give them exactly their request, knowing that they're not going to spend it, then we are taking from other areas of the county in order to do that, if the board.
But they're saying you're taking their money and using it for other areas anyway, that was the article. The article says that they can go up to this amount, and they said you were taking the money and putting it to other things. Now, I don't know if what, we got to get to the bottom of it, we can't be fuzzy, we can't be, I, we got to be, it is or it ain't. So for me, you ain't got to put it in this budget, because they got to vote on it, and they might not vote with me. It don't seem like they voting with me today, they ain't liking me today, they'll like me next week. But I want to see it, give it to me in writing, and let me make a choice from my own vote for the 212,363 people that voted for me, so that I can hold my end of the bargain to them. But if I don't know it, then I'm voting on misinformation or not the full, I wouldn't say misinformation, I'm not getting the full picture, is my piece. So that would help me, you don't have to put it in the budget, I need an email with, here it is. And then I can decide to say, well, no, we might need to take away from this, maybe that as we go into our budget negotiations.
We can certainly get the board the exact request amount versus the recommended amount for Veteran Services Commission for 24. You have it for 23, and that's what the budget adjustment is on for today, so you.
I'm just getting it today, I mean, I'm just getting it for 23, you gave me email yesterday.
Oh, no, but the board knew what it was when the budget was passed, what the request was versus what the allocation was last year. Yeah, that was in, that's in this resolution, it says it very directly, what the request was and what the allocation was.
Okay, well, I want to pay more attention to it, because you slipping a whole lot of resolutions.
No, I didn't slip anything.
I mean, it's a lot of resolutions in this budget, I'm just saying, there's a lot of resolutions in this budget. So I want to have that out, so I can just find out what that is. Because I did get an email yesterday after our meeting for a hundred-some thousand dollars.
So I, can I just comment?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so I hear what you're saying. I think we, there's a meeting on Monday where the chiefs will be talking about the priorities.
I don't want just the chiefs.
Understood, but that is the way we communicate one another. So when the chiefs get together, I think, and I will speak for myself, I'll let you all speak for yourselves, I would be in favor of allocating the full ask to the Veteran Services Commission in light of the circumstances. We have not done this traditionally, although we do always say, it's just a matter of timing, really. The money is always available that they have requested, it's just a matter of when they need it and if they need it. And as Jeff said, they don't generally spend it, so they never come back and ask for the rest of it. This time they did, that's great, hopefully it'll provide more services. But in the next budget, given the circumstances, what we've got in front of us, I would agree with the idea that we fund them at 100% so that we don't have this dynamic where they have to come back and then move forward from there. So I hope that that will, I mean, my staff will bring it up.
We got two votes for it, I would second that, and now we ain't got to go to the chiefs, we want it in the budget. Or look, at least to look at the budget, and then we can make our decision, I will support it.
Jeff will get us the numbers, I want to see the numbers, know what we're looking at, but I will.
All right, Commissioner Dumas.
Yeah, let me just give a couple of comments. First of all, I have a fantastic chief of staff, very professional and effective, Bishop Bobby Hilton, and will not do anything without asking me what I want to do as a commissioner. So when I say, when I send my chief into the meetings, he knows exactly where I am with certain issues, so I needed to say that. And also for 2024, I have not seen a strategic plan from VSO, VSC, on what they're doing with the money now, what they plan on doing, if they get more money, what they're going to do. And I'm not in agreement with increasing the money, because they continue to give us money back. And why would you increase, in my opinion, why would you increase the money? And they have not showed us a plan of where the money is going, where it's been going, which is nowhere. So why would we give them more, and they're giving money back every year? Now, at the point where they can show us that they want to do more marketing, more advertising, and more money is needed, I'm certainly in agreement with that, because they are definitely not reaching 42,000 veterans. So at this point, I'm not in agreement with giving them more money, because they're giving money back, and they're not using the money that they have in a strategic, a strategic way. I would like to have from them a strategic plan on what they plan on doing with the money that they have right now, and I haven't seen it.
Thank you, got two to put the number to what they're asking, so we have it in front of us. Okay, all right, we done got that battle, battle number two. Let's go to it, talking about rebate, by leave number four. And it's also another by leave on here, so we'll go to both of those, I get the number in front of me, as soon as I get it. Where is it? Okay, so. By leave number four or five, I want to start with by leave number five, that's my by leave. This is regarding the rebate for homeowners. In 1996, Hamilton County voters passed a half cent, half percent sales tax. The sales tax was intended to build two stadiums, which it did, as well as it was advertised heavily that there would be a property tax rebate of 30%. Many people voted for it, homeowners, because of the 30% rebate. However, like has been done with a lot of levies, and that's something I'm going to really be working to try to change. Can't have all these levies on here, we must write in the taxpayers in the law. We can't have, we write something for the business operations, but then the taxpayers, they're out here, it's just advertising. They're not in the law. And so they have been promised this amount, and it's only been realized three times. And I'm very proud, when I got here, I worked really hard, and we were able to get it passed unanimously, the 30%, only one of three times. When it comes to the 30%, the sales tax, we always say, we broke and we can't help the homeowner. But on the lease agreement right here, this is old too. This lease agreement is 1997, and we are still upholding everything in here, everything. We said, they got us, we got to do it. It also says on here, property tax rollback on the contract. But they were slick, the people that was here, they put it together years ago, they didn't put the amount that they advertised. But the Bengals was smart, they said, no, we ain't, we not gonna, just a vote, that ain't good. Every page, every little thing, we gonna put it here in writing, and Hamilton County signed off on it. In about 30 days or a couple of weeks, we got an email saying that we are obligated, or we're gonna have to do some fixing up. Our stadium, we spend, we take on 96% of the costs, the taxpayers. 96% of the costs, upkeep, upgrades, all of that. So we got a email saying that we're looking and recommending $30 million or more to fix some things, escalators and all those kind of things. I'm not against it. What I am against is, if we're gonna do 30 million for that, why can't we do the 30 million back to the homeowners with this backdrop? Number one, everybody received a reevaluate letter, and they'll get another one, and they said it's the largest reevaluation in history. That means your taxes will go up, now, is it gonna be one-to-one, I don't know if it's gonna be one-to-one, but it's gonna be more than what you paid last time. And that is due in January. We have been very firm about affordable housing, we put $40 million for affordable housing, but that's new affordable housing. Very important, we did the right thing. But I want to take it a step further and make sure the people can afford the house they already have as well. We can't have the taxes where they got to get the heck out of this county. And I've heard, everything that I introduce is something I've gotten from the voters, I just want to tell you all that. Even the thing with the veterans, I didn't, I'm not a veteran, I. Even the thing with the veterans. I didn't, I'm not a veteran. Some veterans came up with that for me. And I want to thank them. And don't give up, y'all. Don't give up. But on this one, the homeowners were saying, man, we going up. So if, before I got here, we weren't in, we wasn't really high in no double digits. We getting a little higher. But I was saying, we can bond. We're doing some bond packaging of some smaller projects. We could possibly bond the 30 million in that package that would get our upgrades or what have you. And then we're able to give 30 million. I'm for, and I don't apologize. I'm for giving 30 million dollars back to the homeowners. Through the 30% property tax rebate. And so that's why I'm introducing this resolution. And I'm gonna keep introducing it. That's why it keeps, we're inching up. But I'm gonna keep introducing it because without it, we wouldn't be probably inching up. Now, we're going to say, we giving more than we gave last year, but your taxes going to be more than you had last year. So it kind of evens out. You know, you go to a store and they say 50% off, but they done jacked up the price by 100%. So now it's really, did you really get a break? So I have a by leave here. I believe it's the right thing to do. Let me take a step further. It is the right thing to do on behalf of the homeowners. We don't get creative with the taxpayers. We don't get creative with the homeowners, but we always have creative financing for everything else. But we can't get creative when it comes to the taxpayers and the homeowners. And so I think that, I think this is something that's doable. And I'm going to submit this to by leave number five on behalf of the homeowners of Hamilton County who are paying full price on everything and not getting a break nowhere. It was promised to them. Let's keep the promises that we got in this. We got a promise in here we got to keep. We can keep it for the Bengals. Let's keep it for the taxpayers. And so with that, I would like to introduce by leave number five. Is there a second for the homeowners? Okay, by leave number five will be on the record. Thank you very much. All right, now, by leave number four is the administrator's recommendation. Mr. Ludo, would you like to bring that forward?
Happy to. Commissioners, by leave number four is resolution number, also listed as resolution number 42 in your packet. Authorizes a property tax rebate for calendar year 2024. The substantive part of the resolution reads, now therefore be it resolved, Board of County, Board of Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, that $12,800,000 or 12.4% of the proceeds from the dedicated 1/2% sales tax is used for property tax reductions from the 23 tax year payable in calendar year 2024. The administration recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions, Commissioner. Just as a matter of timing and process, this was discussed previously, presented on in staff meeting, discussed earlier this week in staff meeting as well. The rationale for the passage today is to facilitate the auditor's ability to get this rebate on the property tax duplicate for 2024 for Hamilton County homeowners.
Okay, I'll open it up. Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. We've talked about this one a couple of times, but I will reiterate my thoughts related to the property tax rebate. I do want to highlight that the amount this year is higher than the amount last year, primarily because we have taken an approach as a majority of the board to pay attention to a formula that has been established with the advice of the administration to make sure that we retain the reserve balance at 85% for the stadium fund. We have commitments in that fund, debt service, operating, capital, emergency repairs, lots of strain on that balance. And so we need to keep a healthy reserve. If we didn't, we would be dipping into the general fund to pay for the stadium expenses. And I do not think, and I will never think, that that's a good idea. And if we were to go down the road, and I know others don't like to talk about the long term, but if we were to do a 30% rebate year after year, this fund would be bankrupt by 2028. And so I don't think that is what the taxpayers voted me in here to do. And so I am not going to continue to vote. I did it once post-COVID because I thought people might need the relief. But we now have established a formula to make sure that people get the rebate related to the amount of money we're bringing into the fund. I do think that is the appropriate way to approach this. And so as more money comes into the fund, the taxpayer gets an increase. If it were less, they would get a decrease according to the formula, but that would be a vote of this commission. So the reason that the amount of money has increased from last year to this year is not due to any resolutions or anything that was introduced, it's because the formula dictates that, that there's more revenue and so there is more rebate going to the taxpayers. So I think it's a responsible way to approach this fund. I'm hopeful that we will continue to see increased revenue in this fund and we will continue to increase the rebate. But as I said, you know, we are trying to do what we can and retain a certain balance there. And so I'm glad that the taxpayers will see an increase related to this year. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Appreciate it. A couple of comments. The state decided on the property assessment and it's much higher than we anticipated or wanted it to be. So people, it's not consistently evident that everybody's going to be paying more, but some people will be paying more. When I came here in 19, we were in a $29 million hole deficit. I certainly don't want to go back there, and I'm sure my colleagues don't want to either. If we go with by leave four, the average $100,000 home, the homeowner would get about $43, $45 versus $105 if it was a full PTR. I'm out of breath. We have kept the residents, taxpayers, I'll just speak for me. I have kept the taxpayers in the forefront of my mind in everything that we do. And that's why we continue to provide services for our taxpayers. And the taxpayers will be the first ones to complain when we're not able to provide the services that we have told them we would provide. So I think it makes, I mean, we actually could have no PTR if we decided that. And we don't want to decide that because our residents need every help, bit of help they can get. So I'm very comfortable with by leave four and I plan on voting yes for that.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm continuously going to push that the promises that are made are kept. We can't keep it on one side and not keep it on the other side. I do think that keeping the heat on is important on this particular issue, not just this one. Because people look and, I was in a meeting with all of, a lot of people, business people, et cetera, and they said to me, they said, you know, a lot of times y'all crowd broke, but I saw, see a lot of cranes out there. They building and building and building. And this is from, you know, a business person who says, who makes a lot of decisions in Hamilton County, but lives in Warren County. A lot of decisions. And I think when we have different things, we're creative. We can find it. We're going to get the, we're going to do World Cup. Almost $40 million. I mean, we was going to figure it out. I just want us to be as creative because people are really struggling out here. I mean, I'm out here with them and talking to them, seeing them, hearing from them. And the people you don't think is struggling are struggling. I'm not talking about the super poor. I'm talking about the ones in the middle that's paying top dollar and can't get a break for anything. I want to keep them in mind. And affordability is not just building new affordable housing. It's helping people be able to keep the house they already have. And I have people say that their taxes is higher than their mortgage. They can keep the house on the mortgage, but the taxes is driving them out. And I'm talking diverse people. I mean, you can go anywhere with everything from Cincinnati to Green Township to, you know, you go, you go anywhere. I'm hearing from people. Forest Park, other areas. They said these taxes, we getting ready to lose our house because the taxes are higher than our actual mortgages. So if we can do anything, anything, every little bit counts, which is helpful. Today, I will, I think keeping the pressure on and getting it done with the 30% that we were able to do for the 22-year tax period is the right thing to do. I'm going to keep pushing for that. But I think that push also helps us look at, now we're in some more double digits and we're inching up. So I will support this today because I do want the homeowners to get something. But I'm here to tell you that the homeowners, once again, have gotten screwed. They got screwed when this thing got passed and they getting screwed every day. We don't do the 30%. But I want them to have a little something, so I will support this. So I'll make a motion to approve by leave four.
Can I make one additional comment?
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to say, and I had talked to Jeff about it, that when we talk about, I don't know, 20 million for this and 10 million for that, and people are wondering where, why can't they do a 30% or whatever, that there are different pots of money. And I was talking to Jeff about, we need to better educate the people that are watching and our taxpayers specifically, that when we can't, we can allocate money for this particular project but can't allocate for this particular service or purpose because it's in a different pot. And there are restricted funds. Either we made them restricted or they restricted through a levy. But I think we need to do a better job of letting people know why we can't take money from certain other pots to do certain other things. And so I just wanted to say that again, so Jeff can start on that mission of maybe educating our people more about that.
And I will second the motion, but I will also agree that the other caveat to this one is that if this fund doesn't have the money to respond to emergency repairs or debt service, we go into the general fund. The general fund is the one that funds the 911 operators and the sheriff deputies and the JFS workers and all the services that we have. And it just would be devastating to dip into the general fund to provide for something because we didn't handle this reserve balance correctly. So I will second by leave number four.
Yeah, we'll look for you second because we want to educate, we want to educate. I've been asking about the education. But let me say this. First of all, this fund is a sales tax. It was not in a fund. There was a group before us that decided to put it in a fund. But any board can come in and change the dynamic. So this is not a restricted fund by the state of Ohio. Legally, it is not restricted. Number two, I've been asking to be more creative. You could bond the upgrades. Bond it. Put it, we got, we're gonna, we just voted on a bond package that had a number of smaller projects, 20 million, 15 million. Put it in the bond package, which would allow us to open up. The 30 million could have went to the homeowners, so we can do both. So what I'm asking is, let's get creative. And just because it's coming from me, we can't, oh, I don't want it. Let's get creative. And I've asked the administrator, and not, because we don't get to talk to each other like this directly. I've asked them to get creative so we can do both. But if there's no support to get creative, we gonna keep doing what the past commission put. So I want to be honest. I'm not being fiscally irresponsible. Even you said you did 25 cent tax to be able to pay for all these other things. So I'm saying, it could have got a little more creative, and I'm asking the administrator, and it may not be this, it may be something else. Can we get creative where we could try to do both? That's all. I want to try to see if we can do something creative. Can we be innovative? Because I've seen us be innovative when we have these major deals. If some big deal come in here, we gonna figure it out, sharpen the pencil and come up with creativity. So that's where I'm coming in. So I'm educated about the funds. I'm familiar with certain funds can't be used and other funds can be. This fund is not restricted by law. This, when they voted on it, they did not vote, the taxpayers did not vote for this to be in a restricted fund, different than when we have the gas tax and those kinds of things. This was not voted to be in a restricted fund. And I'm saying, we were going to go and dip in this fund for the World Cup and we signed on the dotted line. Thank God we didn't get it. But if we had it for the World Cup, why don't we have it for the homeowners? So that's all I'm asking is, can we just be a little creative? I mean, I'm willing to go with this 14% now because I don't want people not to have anything. But all I'm asking is, in the future, can we get creative? And that's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking is, can we try to get creative? Maybe it don't work, maybe it do work, but can we try to get creative? That's my only thing. So with that, you seconded, and we got a motion on the floor. You seconded. Roll call.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes. All right, back to your by leave.
Thanks, Madam President.
Not by leave, I'm sorry. Back to your comments.
Understood. And thank you. Appreciate the context around this. And I do just want to state, as it relates to the creativity aspect of it and to mesh with, I think, what all three commissioners are saying. When you go back to, I think it was, it might have been 2017 or 2018, the administration had actually come in, I had come to the board with a recommendation for a $5 million PTR. $5 million is admittedly, as we discussed with the auditor's office, it is about the lowest you can provide and the auditor to say, I can, I can still split it up meaningfully across different tax bill. In discussion with the board offices, the board unanimously said the same thing. Can we do something a little bit different here? Understand what the administration's concern is. We're concerned about maintaining that firewall between this fund and the general fund. You're right, Commissioner Reese. Whereas it's not a restricted fund via law, it is a fund that has a lot of legal obligations within it that are legal obligations of the county in terms of contracts, leases, debt service, et cetera. And if, to Commissioner Dreehouse's point, if this fund were not sufficient to pay for those, those obligations then bleed into the general fund. So recognizing that we're trying to do two things, give as much back to the taxpayer as we can and keep that adequate firewall, while also trying to make sure that we are setting ourselves up appropriately for the large amount of future improvements that we know are going to be needed in our riverfront assets. We took that $5 million base and established a formula where we said, we want to maintain this firewall, so let's take an amount of 85% of the maximum annual debt service that we have coming out of that fund because that, at least to bondholders, others, we can say, we have a reserve that is substantive. But on an annual basis, if the revenue performs greater, we will add that delta or that increment on top of that $5 million base so that the taxpayer gets the benefit of an increased PTR when the fund performs better. And we still try to maintain that hybrid approach of helping the taxpayer while at the same time making sure that we protect the other policy initiative or priority, and that is maintaining the viability of the fund. So doing that, we have now had two consecutive years where we've been able to provide a higher amount of PTR. It seems to be a formula that is, that is working in that regards. So I think, and I had several folks in the budget office that, that worked on this. So I want to thank them because I think they were creative in their approach on it. We can review that formula in more detail with the board over this next year if there's ways that we want to tweak it, because it's not a magic formula. There are ways that things can be done differently. It's something that we came up with, but if we want to try to tweak it and we can run different scenarios in the model with the board to say, if we tweaked it this way, this is what it would look like, we can look at that over the course of this next year. This was our recommendation for this year. And again, happy for the contextual conversation around this because I think it's good for the public to understand the dynamics in this fund because it is so important to a lot of responsibilities and quality of life issues associated with the community as well as the taxation base as well. So, thank you.
I got you. I was just, my thing was rolling it into a larger bond package. We're going to get ready to do bonding and maybe to free up those dollars. I know it's year to year and we got to tackle it year to year, but this, with the revaluations coming and a lot of people say, well, it's not going to be one to one. The taxes are going to go up on some people. And considering that has not happened historically, it's the largest reevaluation, I think they said, in history. I thought we could be creative and maybe rolling that into a bond package of 30 million that you'll be asking for.
And I think, Commissioner, to your point, we will certainly.
Possibly, you know. So I just want people to know, they say, oh, she's fiscally responsible. No, I'm talking about rolling it into a bond package. You still get to do all the stuff that we're doing in this budget. And then $30 million would have been freed up to help. would have been freed up to help for whatever bump is going to happen with people with the reevaluation. Next year, that might not, that might not work year to year.
And we will certainly be looking at that, absolutely.
Okay, you got anything else?
Can I?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know who you're looking at, me or Jeff.
Oh, no, I was looking at him, but I wouldn't tell you that.
No, no, no. I just want to say that, you alluded to the idea that because it's your idea, I'm voting against it. I just want to say, we have a difference of opinion on some things. It's not personal. I'm voting with my conscience and as I, I see fit. So I, I just want to say that I am not voting for or against anything because of personality. This is not personal. We are policymakers.
Yes, that's great to know.
We do what we think is the right thing to do.
That's great to know. And I want you to know, when I'm bringing something, it's something, it's not something I just came up with myself. People contact our office, and I try to put it in a policy and be the, kind of the carrier of them. A lot of people feel like they don't have a, a voice. A lot of people didn't even know where we were located. So when they came with this, I said, cool, that looked like a good idea. And I put it forward, and I gave it to everybody to try to get their input and give time for it. So that was the goal. So that's, that's good to know. Nothing is personal with anybody. We're going to be grinning and skinning after this. And with that, Mr. Ludo, you got anything else? We got a long agenda.
Not on this, just other by leave items, if the board is ready to go.
Yeah, let's go with your by leaves.
Just with the deference of the board, one quick by leave comment, and that is just to remind the public of the upcoming budget hearings. We have budget hearing on December the 5th at 1:00 PM here in this room in staff meeting. We also have a budget here in the evening of December the 12th in Silverton at 6:00 PM at their municipal building. People can go to HamiltonCountyOhio.gov/budget to download the administrator's recommended budget. Just, again, if folks are going to do that, just realize that that is not the budget of the Board of County Commissioners at this point in time. So if there's any criticism on it, it comes to the administration. The board's budget won't be final until after it's voted on in mid-December. That's the, the public service announcement on the budget hearings, commissioners. My first by leave item is by leave number one in your packet. This is a resolution approving the tentative collecting, collective bargaining agreement between AFSCME Ohio Council 8. This is the, representing the bailiff's and the clerk of court's office, it's served case number 2023 MED 050474. The administration recommends approval.
Any questions on by leave one?
No question.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. By leave number two is, per my comment earlier regarding the budget hearings, this is a resolution authorizing a special meeting for the Hamilton County 2024 budget hearing. This is the hearing that would be out in Silverton at 6:00 PM at their municipal building on the 12th of December. Administration recommends approval.
Any questions?
Are we confirmed for Silverton as it relates to audio, visual, video stuff?
As of now, there will be no video, but we will have sound, and we are going to bring people in through Zoom. There will be no video.
I thought it was going to be Facebook. It was going to, and we'll be live on Facebook, on our Hamilton County.
Richard was going to.
Yeah. But it won't be going out among.
It's not on I R.
Won't be on I C R C.
No. Are we okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
You okay with it?
Not really. I mean, a lot of people watch. I mean, everybody doesn't get on Facebook. So I was just thinking, a lot of people watch our meetings through I C R C. And why we couldn't just have it here, and if they don't want to come here, they could call or do the Zoom. I mean, we could still do Zoom and calls, but we would be on television here.
This is one of those things that the chief of staffs got together on. That's what I'm talking about.
Well, they were talking about.
Yeah, they, all of them got together, they knew this and agreed, and I don't know if the message got, but this is the stuff I was saying, sometimes it. So you said, where's your chief at? Did they all, all agreed on it? Do we want to, we'll come back to this at the end of the thing, that's the chief of staff.
Well, I'm going to stop it, and I did talk about with the chief, but I still, you know, there was some confusion on whether or not we could do it on the television. And so.
Yeah, I think they came to the chief of staff and told them we're going to do Facebook live.
Yeah, I got that information.
Okay. Well, we'll come back to that. Let's move on. What's next? By leave?
So we have a couple of.
We'll come right back.
We don't have to come back, we can go on.
Okay, we'll come back. Go ahead, go, come back. We'll come.
With, so, do by leave number three.
Oh, that's mine. By leave number three is a resolution appointing members to the Community Development Advisory Council, Jack Cameron, Michael Donahue, Elizabeth Elliott, and Tyra Odom. I'll open it up for any comments or.
I just want to, as always, thank these individuals for being willing to step up and serve the county in this way.
Commissioners, do you want to say?
It all.
Thank you all for serving, and I think we've got a, a great group. And so I move that we adopt by leave three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
By leave six would be the next one, Commissioner.
Yep.
The next two are also appointment resolutions.
Thank you very much. By leave six, resolution appointing members to the Economic Inclusion Advisory Council, James Steele, Randy Berlou, and Michelle Starr. I'll open it up. Any questions or comments, Vice President?
No, no comments other than to thank them.
Commissioner Dumis?
Just glad that we're filling the positions.
Thank you all for serving. I'll make a motion to approve by leave six.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
By leave seven is a resolution appointing members to the Elderly Services Program Advisory Council, Demity Orlet, Susan Van Ammerungin, and Janine Gage. I'll open it up for any comments.
Happy to support.
Commissioner Dumis?
Same.
Thank you all for serving. I'll make a motion to approve by leave seven.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
By leave 10, Mr. Ludo.
Don't want to skip over by leave nine.
Oh, by leave nine, I'm sorry.
Nine, commissioners, this is a resolution authorizing administrator entune to the First Amendment agreement with, between the Board of County Commissioners and the Port of Greater Cincinnati Development Authority. This is, the board heard part of this in staff meeting on Tuesday. This relates to the site readiness projects. This is a $2 million amendment to the port's agreement relating to three contracts, or three projects, one of which was extensively detailed on Tuesday, the other two regarding property acquisition. The administration recommends approval. I know we have representatives from the Port Authority here if there are any questions. Also, to the board's questions from Tuesday, I know that, I think Holly had distributed a letter from the mayor of Evendale indicating his support for the Formica project as well. So again, happy to answer any questions, but the administration does recommend approval.
I just got one comment. Thank you for, thank you to the port and Holly for getting that letter from the mayor of Evendale. I appreciate that. My other thing, just going forward, I know that we got some general information from the U.S. Commerce numbers. I would like to have as part of the, I don't know if it's part of the contract, when you go into contract with these folks, I'd like to see where the zip codes of their employees. I think that would help us get a little closer down, making sure that the people near these areas, we are making that impact. That is the intent of both the port and the commission, which is to get jobs for people that are in Hamilton County. But I will support it. Vice President Dreehouse, anything?
Yeah, I just want to thank the port for their due diligence. I know they're in the room, but I can't see them because they're behind.
Please stand up and be seen.
There we go, I see. There you are. Yeah, that, that's in the way. So thank you for, for bringing these forward. I think it's really important that we've got good, solid projects for the site readiness money. It will allow us to move forward with economic development projects and create jobs in this county. And so I'm, I'm very grateful for the partnership and I'm happy to support this resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Dumis.
Thank you. I've done my due diligence on this by leave, and I'm able to support it.
Okay. Make a motion to approve item number nine.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you, commissioners. By leave number 10, as we've talked about, and we've got one on the consent agenda as well, this is the time of year we start to get more budget adjustments coming in. But by leave 10 is a budget adjustment totaling $754,665. This includes the 104,000 Veterans Relief Dollars discussed earlier in this meeting, also includes the following, some job and family services encumbrances for contracts that are under negotiation for 2024, payroll expenses for the Addiction Response Coalition, a transfer from the Auto Title Fund in the clerk's office, a transfer within the Auto Title Fund within, for personnel costs within the clerk's office. It includes appropriations within the Workers' Comp Fund for personnel costs in that fund, transfer in, for personnel in MSD Oversight for, in, in county administration, the appropriation of additional state grants for the 23 special election and, at the Board of Elections, a appropriation of a grant in municipal court, appropriation of a state grant in the clerk's off, in the clerk of court's office, a coroner's office grant for training, and Department of Environmental Services, a transfer and appropriation for a federal grant for additional air quality particulate monitoring. The administration recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Open it up.
Particulate monitoring. The administration recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Open it up for questions.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions. Okay. Move to approve item number 10.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
That concludes my by leaves, commissioners.
Okay, thank you. We went to the regular calendar. Mr. Engineer, how are you?
Good afternoon, commissioners. First, I want to thank you for everything you do. It's an unappreciated job. Thank you. Two, two items on, on the engineer's agenda. Item number one is a resolution to rebid the Loveland Road Bridge. We originally bid this in July and came in, the bids came in higher than the 10% allowed by the Ohio Revised Code. We've readjusted the estimate, put some things as alternate bid items, and the new estimate is 765,000. We have funding from the Permissive Auto Fund, City of Loveland OPWC grant, and the City of Loveland and Claremont County funding to total that amount. And the construction is anticipated to be completed in September of 2024. Item number two is a resolution to put out bids for the Corbett Road at Wenton Road Storm Sewer Improvements. This is located in Springfield Township. The engineer's estimate is $99,000. The funding is coming from MSD for this repair, and completion should be done in May of 2024.
All right, open it up. Any questions?
Question about the second one, Eric.
Yes.
I don't remember a time when the, it, and I'm applauding at the collaboration between the engineer's office and MSD. Can you better describe?
Yeah, we brought this to you a couple weeks ago for a memorandum, memorandum of understanding between MSD and the county. MSD put a new sanitary line in a number of years ago, and it was discovered that that line went through one of our storm sewers. In order to correct that problem that's causing flooding, so in order to correct that, instead of moving the MSD line, MSD is paying to relocate the storm sewer line so that there's no longer a conflict.
Got you. All right, great. Yeah, I'm happy to support this.
Commissioner Dumis?
No, no questions.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve items one and two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Thank you.
Thank you. MSD.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Lauren DiGhercia with MSD. I have with me today Tony E. and Matt Spadari, the principal engineers overseeing the projects we'll be discussing today. Three items are on the agenda, starting with item three. This is legislation to approve construction of the Dry Run Area Sewers Phase II Contract RB Project and appropriate $7,613,000. This project is included in the approved 2023 CIP for construction and is part of the larger Dry Run Area Sewers Expansion Project located in Anderson Township, which was initiated in the early 1990s and has been implemented through six phases, four of which have already been constructed. This phase includes the construction of approximately 5,500 feet of sanitary sewer. The proposed sewer, when completed, will expand MSD sewer system and customer base by providing sewer availability to 27 existing properties currently served by on-site systems and, as well as facilitating potential area development and providing a connection point at Broadwell Road for a final future construction phase. Item four is legislation to approve construction of the Dry Weather Channel for Sanitary Sewer 937 and appropriate $4,606,000. This project is also included in the approved 2023 CIP for construction and will install a 5,600-foot dry weather flow channel along an existing combined sewer, which will prevent the accumulation of solids that is currently occurring during periods of dry weather and resulting in odors, as well as operational issues, water quality issues. So the project will address these items as well as address structural deficiencies in the sewer. Item five is to authorize construction of the Redding Road, 12th Street to East Liberty Street Sewer Replacement Project and appropriate $3,469,000. This project will address structural defects in the combined sewer in this area by installing approximately 1,400 feet of new sewer, and another about 900 feet will be lined. In addition, this project will fill, seal, and abandon approximately 1,850 feet of existing combined sewer. This project was slated for an out year, 2025, for construction, and MSD's approved 2023 to 2027 CIP, but it is ready to proceed to construction at this point in time, ahead of schedule, and MSD does recommend proceeding at this time in order to address those structural deficiencies in the sewer. So recommend approval of all three items and can take any questions at this time.
Thank you. I'll open up for questions, Vice President Dreehouse.
No questions.
Commissioner Dumis?
No questions.
Okay, I move to approve item number three through five.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stormwater. Engineer, you're back.
And I'm back with my other hat on. Item six and seven are two stormwater items. Item six is a resolution approving an agreement with the Hamilton County General Health District to perform stormwater services in 2024. Contract is $595,030. This money comes from the Stormwater Fund. Item number seven is a, the fourth renewal of an agreement with the Hamilton County Soil and Water Conservation District to perform stormwater services in 2024, and that's $635,826. Again, that comes out of the Stormwater Fund.
Okay, any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, I'll move to approve items six and seven.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ludo, the consent agenda?
The consent agenda, and there are on this agenda, Commissioners, several annual credit card resolutions. I think the Board has asked me, given the length of this agenda, to hit the substantive ones with budgetary impact. If you want, I can mention every time there's a credit card resolution. Otherwise, I'll just hit the.
Well, I think you should, who are the credit cards? You should acknowledge, not one by one, but who are they?
Well, I won't know them till I.
You don't know? Okay, okay, never mind. Go to the other ones first.
I'll just, I'll hit them as I go through. So, the other, item number eight is the Statement of Financial Transactions for October of 2023. Item nine is a credit card resolution for the Board of Elections. Item number 10, items number 10 and 11 are both grant amendments between the county and Norwood and Golf Manor respectively. This relates to our community revitalization grants. The, in both of these cases, it relates to the time, the timing of the grant. So if you remember, Norwood has a facade improvement program that they applied for and received from the county. Golf Manor was for the acquisition and demolition of property for development purposes. The item number 10 is just an extension of Norwood's grant until the end of 2024. Item number 11 is an extension of Golf Manor's grant until March 31 of 2024. Item number 12 is a resolution appointing one member to the Over the Rhine Special Improvement District Board. The county is a member of the Over the Rhine Special Improvement District as a major property owner in the, in this area of the, of the community. This is a position that was previously held by Mark Von Allman, the prior Senior Policy Manager for Economic Development. We have recently hired Mark's replacement. This puts Holly Christman, Assistant Administrator Christman, on the board for the December meeting, and will ultimately come back to the Board with a resolution to put the new Senior Policy Manager on that. Item number 13 is a budget adjustment. We have got the sheriff, the sheriff's office for overtime and to appropriately assign some levy dollars to certain functions. We have the court reporters for a, or an equipment, equipment purchase. And this was, Commissioner Reese, you had asked a question prior to the meeting about whether this was budgeted. This, this is a transfer, so this is within the current budget. We have a municipal court item related to payroll, municipal court, public defender, additional dollars for assigned counsel, developmental disability services, a transfer from capital to fund year-end payroll, juvenile court. We have additional youth placement costs. We have a state grant for lab equipment within the coroner, and we have the Loveland Road Bridge in the Engineers' Office, as well as county facilities funding for design of the courthouse facade and roof project. Item number 14 is a resolution authorizing criminal background check services within Job and Family Services with the Ohio Bureau of Criminal Identification and Investigation at $250,000. Item number 15 is a resolution to accept the execution of a contract at River City Correctional Center for pharmacy services. Item number 16 is a purchase order, also out at River City for food services, with food services and supplies with Cisco. Item number 17 is a communication regarding a vacation request. This is just to accept for the record. This is relating to an alley off of Camp Road. Item number 18 is a resolution involving credit cards for the Hamilton County Communication Center. Item number 19 and 20 are two different credit card authorizations for the Emergency Management Agency. One of those is a general credit card and one is for fuel services. Item number 21 is a resolution adopting the Hamilton County Continuity of Government Plan. This is a plan that's put together for us by the Emergency Management Agency to help us better identify the administrative processes that we would have to go through if there ever were some sort of disruption of government here in Hamilton County. This is the same plan that was approved back in 2020. This is just amending it to put the right names and the right, and the right organizational charts in that have changed over a couple of years. We have item number 22. This is a resolution approving the tentative collective bargaining agreement between IUOE Local 20, representing the Stadium Security Specialists, SERB case 2023, MED 090735. Then we have several job and family services items. We have the Primary Workforce Investment Grant through the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services. We have an agreement with YWCA for home visitation and parent training services. There was a question on this item as well as to why it indicated original agreement. This is the new agreement. I believe there may have been some amendments in a prior agreement. This is now a new agreement, so it is restating it as the original agreement for $502,767. Item number 25 is an amendment with changing lives, youth services for group home services for $500,000. Item number 26 is a resolution authorizing agreements with eight vendors for independent living services at Job and Family Services, all totaling $9 million. Item number 27 is a resolution authorizing an agreement for, also for independent living services with three different vendors for $3 million. Item number 28 is a resolution authorizing Amendment One of an agreement with Lighthouse Youth Services for foster care services at $6.4 million. Item number 29 is a single source agreement with Hern House with Job and Family Services for independent living services at $140,000. Item number 30 is a resolution authorizing a Second Amendment and renewal of an agreement with MedCert for medical field training for SNAP and TANF consumers at $195,000. We have credit card usage at the municipal court. We have the resolution adopting the annual fee increase for 2024 for planning and development. This is on the agenda specifically because the resolution that exists benchmarks the fees to the CIP, which for last year was 8%. The Planning and Development Office realized that was just too high and came back in with a recommendation of 4.5%. So this pulls that, that fee increase down from what it would have been. Item number 33 is a credit card use authorization in the prosecutor's office. Item 34 is credit card use within the public defender's office. Item number 35 is a report of no objection to one liquor permit application in the sheriff's office. Item number 36 is use of credit cards for stadia and parking department. Item number 37 is credit card usage in the treasurer's office. And Commissioners, I think that completes the consent agenda. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Open it up for questions or comments. Vice President Drehouse?
I have no questions or comments.
Commissioner Dumas?
Just a general question. Jeff, the budget adjustment that was a by leave, we also have a budget adjustment number 13. Is it a, is the reason because some of the information came in later and that's why we made it a by leave?
That's precisely correct, Commissioner. Yeah, just this time of year, especially with the books closing in December, things come in fast and we need to get them on the agenda. We try to do this quickly as we can.
And the other comment is with the Healthy Aging Grant, I'm glad that we are allowing the Council on Aging to facilitate that. I think that's a great decision to do that.
I apologize, Commissioners. I don't know that in the, in my by leave, and I know Council on Aging is here, so I apologize, but I did not, I didn't, I think I skipped right over that. It also, that budget adjustment 13 also does appropriate the Healthy Aging Grant received from the State of Ohio at $2.4 million.
Since you came down and paid for parking, would you like to say something? At least say hello.
Well, thank you, Commissioners, for your support, and I am happy to report that the services are returning with the workforce is improving. So, you know, we've, we've been suffering with gaps in services because of workforce shortages, and that's been closing significantly this year. So, some good news there. So we appreciate the additional revenue from the State of Ohio through the Healthy Aging Grants.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So what do you attribute that to?
The, the improvement in workforce, I think part of it's the economy. Our home care providers are reporting better recruiting of new, new workforce. Part of it is also the rollout of our Add and Aid app, which has enabled us to recruit new workforce, the gig economy, to help older adults provide services in the home. So those two things. You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, no questions, no more comments. I'm sorry, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I make a motion to approve, approve and receive for the record, items number eight through 36.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Sorry, I left off, and I make a motion to approve item 37.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Okay, now we got to go back to the by leave for the by leave number two. Have we got Bridget Doherty is here? You want to tell us about the, how we're going to do Silverton, or if we got to do it here?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm Bridget Doherty, the Director of the Office of Media and Engagement. And I just got off the phone with ICRC, who might be listening, but they're working really hard to livestream our night meeting. So they're very hopeful that they're going to be able to pull it off. But if they're not, we do have a backup plan, and it would be going live on Facebook.
Okay.
But it would be Facebook Live only.
Say it one more time.
Sorry, it would be Facebook Live only.
Oh, okay. No Zoom.
We can do Zoom, so people can come in remotely as well. But we would do Facebook Live. We would not be on YouTube unless, until later. We can download it and then put it up on YouTube later.
Okay. I'll open it up. We're going to have a final answer on this. Where are we at? Commissioner Dumas?
I'm fine with it. No, no more questions. Yeah.
You're good with it? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve by leave two to have our special budget hearing meeting 2024 in Silverton, Ohio.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes, and thank you for the additional information.
All right. We got two executive session. I'll make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 12122G4, to discuss collective bargaining and to discuss collective bargaining.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.